I'm going to call the Policy Committee. Meeting of District 96, the order.
Lisa Gainer. I'm sorry.
Yes, roll call please.
Lisa Gainer.
Here.
Rachel Morello.
Here.
Michael Bryant.
Arthur Perry.
Present.
Randy Brockway.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Here.
And David Kadama.
Here. Okay. Next item, Item B, Public Comment Statement. If there's any public comment?
None.
None?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to Item C. We're going to start off with updates on policies that came from either staff or board or community. And we're going to start off with Policy 460. This is actually a second reading of this policy where we're updating, just we're inserting new language into the policy to provide for procedures, that would provide for procedures at different purchase amounts for services. So if you look at the attachment, it is a edited version, adding in just that language under Item 1, it'll be 1B for expenditures between $5,000 and $25,000, the procedures attached to this policy must be followed. And so those policy, those procedures that are provided as an exhibit, this is just an outline, there should be, you know, I would expect that the administration would have more detailed procedures beyond that as we move forward with this. So you'll see that below the 25,000, above the $25,000, we follow the state law and the requirements. Between $15,000 and $25,000, we're instituting a requirement that the school district is required to obtain written price quotes from at least three suppliers or vendors. From $5,000 to $15,000, the district is requested to obtain written price quotes from at least two vendors. And it does provide for a provision that there could be some emergency exceptions to this.
David, I just have one comment I would like to add to this. On the last line of the administrative procedures, it talks about emergency and sole source purchases may result in exceptions to these rules.
Yes.
Could we, is it possible for the county, for example, when doing a sole source, it talks about that you'd have to supply some sort of sole source justification letter?
Justification.
If that could be added to the administrative procedures so that we know in certain situations, and usually you have to explain why it's a sole source purchase?
Okay. So emergency and sole source purchases may result in exceptions to these rules. Written justification is provided? Provided that written justification is submitted and approved?
For the, yeah, that's fine.
You're not concerned about emergency, you're more concerned about sole source?
Right, yes. Just if you can add another sentence to say, for sole source purchases, a sole source justification letter should be provided.
What does that mean, sole source?
So you just have, there's only one vendor, like with the roofing project? Or with the, what is that, with the?
Well, the roofing, we had multiple.
Who did? We had one where there was only one bidder that came in.
Yeah.
No, generally sole source is when you don't submit it for bid. You're looking for professional services and you want to hire somebody that has a specific talent that you probably, it's hard to submit for bid. And that's the type of person you say, well, this person has a service that's unique in which we can't submit it for bid. And generally, that's professional services and other type boutique type services.
Well, I mean, but it would, that adding that verbiage would work for any sole purchase.
Right.
Even if, I mean, I understand there might, you know, if there's an instance where it'd probably be more emergency than that. I mean, that you couldn't have time to get three bids, do you know what I'm saying?
I could see that creating an argument where you sit there and say, oh, we need specific skill sets and everything like that.
Well, a source, a sole source justification letter usually just says, this is the only type of person who does this type of work or something. Something, it's usually one sentence.
Maybe for like the historical windows kind of thing, but even that, I mean, that's still, I mean, that would be hard.
Yeah, but so it's.
I mean, it's just, I don't disagree with you, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
I mean, so I'm just trying to think in my mind of an example of sole source that we've really had. I don't think we really have had one that I could.
Well, can you?
Yeah, well, for instance, what's her name? The educational consultants, I'm drawing a blank at their names.
Pat and?
Pat and Peggy?
No, 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 not them. The ones who did the pilot.
Action learning systems.
Thank you, thank you.
Action learning systems.
Right, right. That wasn't a bid, that was a specific type, they have a specific type of service that they provide, that's something that you typically don't submit for a bid for. It's a unique service, for lack of a better term. Something like that.
Okay, well, I guess regardless, if there is a sole source purchase, then there should be some justification letter.
Right, some, that's it, right.
So the language that you said for sole source purchases, a justification letter, is that the language that you would recommend?
Right, right, should.
A justification letter. What? Shall?
What happens with that letter is all I'm wondering.
Yeah, shall be submitted and approved by the board or?
Should we get it to the invoice? Like, you know, when we put the invoices in, when you guys see them, should we put that letter in? Because if it's an emergency situation, like for example, we had to get.
Right.
Yeah, we, an emergency situation, and we only have a single source for that service.
Right, right. We could do the letter for emergency and sole source purchases should contain justification letters should be provided to the board at the next upcoming meeting, something like that. Prior to approval of the invoice.
Well, and it's probably not a bad idea to attach it to the invoice as practice.
Right, right. Just so that we know what it is.
Because then you have to go back, you know, where it goes to.
And usually, just as common practice, you know, putting it into the weekly report, this happened, you know, for example, if it's something specific to the roof, this happened that was an emergency, for $7,500, we had to get a repair, and this is the person we used, and why, it attached as a sole source letter will be in your packet.
Right, okay.
So you want, at a meeting, you want it to be provided at the next?
Board meeting.
Next.
Along with the accounts payables.
That way it gets into the record.
Right.
Okay, and actually, we're going to do this for emergency and?
Yeah.
And/or?
Do we need that?
No.
Do we need that introductory language?
No.
I don't know. Could do my both of them, right?
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at, just adding the sentence, emergency and sole source purchases may result in exceptions to these rules. Can we just start off with a justification letter shall be provided to the board at the next?
Yeah.
Board meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need the full word, right?
Yeah, right.
Justification, is that grammar sounds okay? A justification letter shall be provided to the board at the next board meeting?
Yes.
That's good. Anyone?
Can I just say, provided to the board at its next regular board, at its next regular meeting? Or regular business meeting? Would that help? As opposed to a committee meeting or as opposed to a special meeting? I'm just thinking at its next regular business meeting.
That's fine.
Any objection to that?
No.
You said at the next board?
At its, given to the board at its next regular.
Should be provided to the board at the next?
Regular.
Regular.
Business meeting.
Business meeting. Because that's where we put all the invoices and, you know, accounts payable information. We don't provide that at committee or special meetings.
Okay.
Just a question about the requirement to obtain written price quotes from at least three vendors.
Yes.
Does that assume we'll always go with the lowest quote?
That unless, it's not required by law, I mean, we could require it.
It wouldn't.
Okay.
Wouldn't, and, you know, I think a lot of it would depend on, you would also get, you know, written quotes with scope of outlining scope of service.
Yeah, because in my, in my short experience, it just seems, that has really restricted us.
I agree. That's why, that's why, that's why I'm asking, because I wouldn't want to be restricted.
It has restricted us in the case of over $25,000.
Right, right. In terms of, yeah, you have to.
Because the only time it applies is right now.
Right, right now. So, yeah, I would agree with Mary Rose that I wouldn't want to insert that into the.
And we shouldn't read this in, we shouldn't read that into it either.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think it's more for validation that the pricing is.
Fair.
Look, fair.
Right.
Yeah, fair, and also that.
I mean, it doesn't.
That you, that you not only looked at the pricing, but also the scope of services.
Right, and it potentially can give you negotiation leverage, depending if you want what, where you want to go, you know the scope of what's out there, in my opinion.
Yeah, that's why generally the language is the lowest responsible bidder, because it gives you the flexibility.
With that responsible.
Terms and conditions on that.
Right.
But.
We've applied that before.
For the larger, that brings up a point that just popped into my head, for larger projects, we have very specific scope of service usually defined, like the building projects, we had, you know, the architects put together a very explicit bid package and all these.
Yeah, and you're telling them what you've got specification.
Right, so what you're getting is, you know, numbers that should represent the exact same thing, and if they don't, then you get into all this, you know, rigmarole with the vendors and arguing over what was.
I think the most obvious.
But my, just to finish my point though, for this, because we don't have that specified, that you have to have these really specific, you know, bid documents or whatever, that, you know, it's a little more gray area, I think, with the scope, as you say, sorry.
Yeah, so I was just going to add, what I've experienced is that the more discriminating factors are in just the pure management of that, of that service provider. So whether it's, you know, for mechanicals or plumbers, how well, what's their reputation, what's their past experience in managing that project, in managing their employees, that we can't really discriminate with just purely based upon who's the lowest responsible bidder. It's very difficult to impose that standard. Okay, good discussion. All right, so I will, if there's no other comments or questions or proposed amendments, I'll look for a motion to adopt this either as a second reading with the added language, added sentence, or if someone would like to make a motion to expose this for another month before we seek final action on this, I can accept that.
I have a question here. On 460, the operational services, which is the, what, the larger policy?
460?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
I guess I have a question.
Well, that is this policy, yeah.
Yeah, but were we talking about here, the administrative procedures?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
I have a question on the policy itself.
Uh huh.
And it says here, purchases of items outside budget parameters require board approval except in emergency. And I have a question, is exactly what is budget parameters?
So, I would interpret that as just, you know, with regards to our capital improvement project, we had that budget, and once, and I think we stipulated towards that if we were start to approach that budget, that we need be notified.
Well, is this only a capital project?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, what, I guess one of the questions that I have, or concerns that I have about that phraseology, is that we don't have itemized budgets. So I don't really know what it is that I'm exactly approving in the budget.
Oh, I agree.
And until such time as we actually get procedures that, that would say, okay, in the budget, you've approved these budget items that are very explicit, you know, that would normally be referred but aren't, you know, I guess because we don't have itemized budgets and it's not clear what we are exactly approving and what, you know, that would be referred to the board.
I think we, this board has done a good job of creating that greater transparency.
It is.
And demanding that, hey, if we want to see more details on a forward-looking basis, what are we expecting to come in, you know, and, you know, if we're going to spend $400,000 on laptops, we want to know that well ahead of time so we can see, does that fit within our budget, or show us the justification that it does fit within our budget.
Yeah, I'm just saying that when I approve the budget, I want them to be explicit on what it is that I'm approving, that I'm not going to approve when it's purchased. Very, I want to see that specifically, and I don't think this language gets it that.
Well, this just says that it's within the budget, so if we now create a new budget with sub-line item numbers, then it still, this still fits.
Yeah, is that what I'm wondering, is that a question for the budget policy? How to create the budget or for this? Because.
I think it's both. I don't want to not have something referred that was normally referred because it's somehow buried in a budget that we didn't see, that, you know, if somebody tells me.
Okay, what kind of language would fix that, I guess, is what I'm wondering. Just as a clarification, this per policy, other than the changes we are proposing now in red on this copy, on the board book copy, is, is it basically the ISB policy, or is it a custom policy for us?
I think, I would, I would say most of it is the ISB policy, but we are now, we are now customizing it.
Yeah, but other than this.
I would just, I would just get rid of that sentence.
But if we get, but the sentence, I think, has a purpose, which is to validate that, you know, let's take, set aside the budget situation, let's assume that we have a good budget process. Let's just assume that for sake of argument. I think this language is there to ensure that expenditures are made, purchases are made within that budget, and you need, if it's an exception and it's not covered under the budget, that it needs board approval. So I think that's a good thing.
I think it's a good thing, to be said, we have an itemized budget, but that you can absolutely tell me that when I voted for that budget, I knew that I, I knew explicitly, not implied because there were some attached agreements, that I was voting for something that would normally be referred if it hadn't been in there.
Mary Rose, I wanted to just comment, I think that the better sentence to address is the one preceding that, that says, adoption of the annual budget authorizes superintendent or designated to purchase budgeted supplies, equipment and services, providing that state law is followed. So that goes to your argument of, well, we're not voting on an itemized budget, so did we know that we were voting on a new truck or a, that basically, that says that we're validating that purchase? Yeah, I agree with you there.
And I think that's a, I do see that as a danger, because you don't know if you're going to need a new truck or not. There's sometimes that, so you, you have just a general bucket budget for things like that.
Which we were calling, I think, in the budget hearings, the space holder, but I agree with Mary Rose, that I, just because we're putting it in space holder doesn't mean we're putting our stamp of approval of, go ahead and purchase it.
Right.
But think about it though, that there's other language here, and we now are enhancing it to have a procedure that breaks down the process so that in many cases, there's still required board approval.
Right.
So, I hear what you're saying, and I agree, if we could, we can look at the budget process, but as far as this policy is concerned, I'm pretty comfortable with it now. I think it gives us a little more, you know, accountability than what we had before.
Well, I would consider, you know, where it says, you know, in the first sentence of that paragraph, where it says, provided that state law is followed, that we insert the additional state law and the requirements of this, of this policy, because we're adding other requirements. So it's, we're going beyond just what's minimally required by state law.
Yeah, I'm concerned about us following our, our requirements, and because we don't have a procedure that really addresses it.
Would you agree with that? Because if it's just state law, then, well, we have these other requirements and those aren't per state law.
I agree, but isn't this, isn't it implicit that you have to follow this policy?
Yeah.
It's the policy. It's sort of referring to itself. I don't know, I'm not a legal language, legal language person, to know that's really necessary or not.
Well, that's, I would say that about state law, aren't we just generally, oh, we're supposed to be following state law, are we not? You know, and this, and this kind of keeps on saying, you're going to follow state law, and it's mentioned a couple of times in here, that you're going to follow the applicable state law.
State law is only $25,000 and above.
Right.
Right, that's why we're, we can be, we have to follow, that's the minimum, we can go ahead and enhance it more. I would support Mary Rose's suggestion to delete that whole paragraph, I don't see how that benefits the board at all. Because we already provide for in the administrative procedure, that if there's going to be an emergency, they can go ahead, that's administration, go ahead and bypass procedures and provide us a justification letter at the following business meeting.
Okay, well, do you want to take, make that motion then?
Yeah.
So we're going to delete this whole paragraph? That's your, that's your recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, and do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, so discussion?
So now, if we do that, we don't have any linkage between this policy and the budget process. Is that a problem?
We can, I think we need to take a look at it. I would, I would think that language such as saying that the purchases must be supported by the budget, but I don't think that an approval of a budget should mean you get to, that we're justifying a purchase. You see, it's the inversion that's true.
I understand what you're saying, I don't, what does adoption of a budget even mean then?
I would say.
Other than something we have to do, because state law tells us to.
Basically, what we're saying is we would like itemized budgets, that's really what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm there yet.
Yeah.
Itemized budgets, because I don't know businesses that, that say, all right, we're going to budget for, you know, everything down to, you know, number of papers and, you know, and, you know, for business units, I don't know if we would do that. Actually, I've seen, no, I take that back, we have tried to, it drove us crazy, because we're trying to figure out how many copies we're going to make in a year.
I hear what you're saying, I did work for Allstate, we actually did trip by trip budgeting, we knew everywhere we were going, and it, and it was approved in the budget, but we did submit a trip by trip budget.
Right.
And I guess, I guess the example I'll give here is, is the $400,000 worth of computer equipment, you know, presumably it was in the budget, but, you know, it doesn't seem that people were real thrilled with the way that.
Lack of communication.
Well, we were clearly though, that, that violated this policy in so many ways, I don't know.
Oh, because it was over 25?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, just, I'm just saying that, I'm putting that out there, but, you know, I agree, I mean, an itemized budget process, does that mean if you put an line item in for a new truck, does that mean we buy the truck whether we need it or not?
That's what this policy seems to suggest, it says, as long as we approve the budget, we approve the purchase of.
If they.
But by the way, the computers are specifically exempted because it falls under the data processing exemption.
Exempted from the?
It's from state law, from bidding.
From bidding.
Right, right. So that's the problem.
Well, I still have a problem with it.
No, I mean, I agree, we have a problem with it as well, right.
So I guess my question would be, is, is the detail on this budget, which is the budget form, is pretty detailed? I mean.
I think you would want to go even further than that.
No, I would basically want them to maybe just highlight it and say, you're approving these particular items in the budget that would otherwise be, which would otherwise be referred, except that they're itemized here. I'll give you an example, we were just looking at some of the contracts today, and I think there was, I think it was a Bovna's contract, it says about trips, one of them said, the board has to prove it unless it's in the budget, or something like that. There, anyway, some of our expenditures in some of these contracts are tied to the budget, but, you know, but I would think it would be.
Everything should be tied to the budget.
Well, I'm just saying, but it would be a lump sum in the budget, I wouldn't necessarily.
And I think we're, again, I think we're, I see us improving that, so that we understand when there's a million dollar line item, that we have an idea, what are, what are some of the driving factors of that million dollar?
You know what, I'll, you know.
So, so we have a motion, we have a motion on the table, and a second and everything. So need to, is there any other comments before we vote on it?
Can, to restate the motion is to delete the paragraph, is that in addition to adding the sentence to the administrative procedures about the sole source justification letter?
Didn't we already?
No, we already.
That's already, this is different? Okay, then let's.
This is right here.
Okay.
No, I do understand the concern about.
All right, if that's the motion on table, fine. I am going to vote that we need to have alternate language, not just delete it, but I don't know what that language is.
Well, so you're.
That or?
Huh?
You're no.
Oh, or voting no?
Okay, well, yeah, so, do you, do you have the motion, the motion then?
Yeah, I have Rachel motioned, and, I'm sorry, Rachel seconded, Mary Rose made the motion.
Yes.
Ready? Do you want to take the roll?
Yes, please.
Okay. Lisa Gainer?
No.
David Kadama?
No.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
No.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Okay, so for now at least, we're just going to, we're going to retain this language in there.
I think we should have that conversation. I'm not voting, I'm not voting no, because I disagree.
You just sound like this approach, you think there's a better approach.
Right.
And to be honest with you, I think we should be able to find one.
Okay.
You know, I would like to see more and more things approved in the budget, I just want to make sure that when somebody said, I approved $10,000, you know, conference in Hawaii, that I knew that that's specifically what I approved.
Right.
Not some lump sum that, and that's a concern.
No, I agree. So.
Go ahead.
David, look for a, we do have one additional amendment to 460 that we've just added here. Like I said, is there a motion, would someone like to make a motion to adopt, force the amended, the update to policy 460 with the additional language to the procedures exhibit, that sentence as a second reading, or as, we could adopt it as a first reading and expose it for another 30 days, another meeting?
I'd like to move to approve it as a second reading.
Have second?
Second.
Okay.
Lisa Gainer?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
No.
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Randy Brockway, aye.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to bring the room.
Oh, I heard.
Hi, I'm sorry.
All right, fair enough.
Just starting?
But I don't have serious objection.
No. Oh, this wasn't the intended, so, okay.
No. Sorry.
Okay, so, we're going to move to the next item, that's, this is policy 530, I'm hoping for some, some good discussion about this. Again, this is the policy entitled Hiring Process and Criteria. My overarching goal here is to really put some, some more meat behind this, this policy to really provide greater direction from, from the board to our administration of what is meant by hiring highly qualified individuals, what are some of the guiding factors in that hiring process, that should lead to how we assess and evaluate and maintain a highly qualified staff. Whether they are certified teachers, administrators, secretaries, or maintenance staff, whoever, all staff that impact our, our students. So with that, in your packets were a, an edited version of the policy.
Got you.
Do you want to thank Rachel, Rachel Morello and her working group, who helped put together some, some suggestions of amendments? The board, our board attorney did go through it all, looked at the legal ramifications, and then suggested that we kind of put together a, propose a, an update to 530 with an exhibit, accompany an exhibit. So that's for you. So what I would like to do is kind of just walk through this, walk through some of the comments from our board attorneys, which include some questions to us to consider.
Can you, can I just ask the exhibits, there are four attachment support book, one is. One is the rewritten policy, one is a version with commentary from an attorney, and then two other attachments.
Should be just the clean versions?
And an added one?
No, we put in, and this was from before, we just kind of kept it all the same, which is what we do to screen administrators and teachers.
Yeah, this is more for background reference.
But this is currently what we're doing, current practice?
Yes.
Not a proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
And is the policy as it reads current practice, or is it added? I mean, I read it and I kind of thought it was somewhat current practice with more detail of things that we would like documented.
Right, right, and I think our procedures that we're doing fulfill the updates that we're doing. You mean like the procedures that we've added that we're starting to do with the screening and the interviewing, fulfill a lot of the updates that the attorney is recommending?
Okay. Is it, you're intent to attach the administrative positions, interview procedures, and the other? No, this is just by way example?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for background.
I have a few comments, but if you want to go through the rigmarole, I'll-
Okay.
I'll hold back.
Okay. So, starting with the policy 530, there's a new applicability section. So this, so it's kind of self, self-explanatory. Some of the, we are saying that this policy does apply to filling any open positions, but except for the following, substitutes who are filling in for regular employees who are absent for a particular day or period of time, individuals who are entitled to fill the open position, including but not limited to those individuals on a recall list or who are ordered reinstated by an appropriate legal proceeding, and transfers between positions within the same job category. So anyone have any questions about that?
Are you going to go through the comment questions as you go, or not?
Um, I, I, I will.
After you do?
Yes.
Okay.
So one of the, one of the comments is, you know, in our interpretation, how we apply this, it could be subject to a, a union's demand to bargain. But I don't interpret that as the board attorney saying that that's what would happen. But when you start to change, touch any of this, it could be-
There is, what was I going to say? There is a union, I can't find the provision, that says if any of this conflicts with the collective bargaining agreement, the CBA shall prevail.
But that's if it's clear, kind of clear cut. If it's not, then someone has to judge upon that.
Correct.
So I, so I took it as the, our board attorney was just saying, just keep that in the back of your mind.
Right, yeah, it says the CBA language will govern, that's on that, okay.
Okay. Any questions about this applicability section?
No, I thought they raised some good questions here, about-
And just going to be-
The long term, is a long-term sub, how do we want to handle long-term subs? Because that's a little bit different to me than a sub who's going to be here for a day or maybe even a couple of days. Maybe that process should be different because they're going to be in front of kids for a long period of time.
Well, like the FMLA, right? Someone goes on maternity leave-
Yeah, or, you know, we had a couple situations last year where we had some long-term subs and, and quality manners when it's a long-term sub.
Yes.
I guess I would question as to whether, how we would want to handle that in applicability. Because I, I think subs that are short-term, I completely would agree with this statement, but I think the long-term sub has maybe, needs to be handled differently, or maybe needs to be put through the process.
I think so. I would think that a long-term sub ought to be looked at as a interim employee and, and put through, and put through, you know, all the rigors associated with that to make sure that we get the best teacher in front of the students.
I could support that.
Is, is that a difficult, this is just looking for the administrators, when you're in that situation, sometimes long leave time might not be available because it might be a sudden sickness or something that comes up.
So, I mean, first of all, I, I agree, we started to do that during the year last year, was we put the long-term subs, they went through that entire process. What that does mean though, and I wholeheartedly agree, I think they're with our kids for an extended period of time, which is, is it's very critical that they, they meet our criteria of excellence. What that can mean though in an emergent situation, is it can mean that you have somebody in between? Because you have to have somebody in the classroom. Now, granted, that person may end up with a position, but we would still take that person through the process. Then we may find somebody else.
Right, and so from a transition, then you got to instead of one-
How do you define long-term?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's the, the next step, logical. Do you have a comment?
You know, I think I was going to say, long-term is if we know about an FMLA leave, or if we know about a, you know, whatever type of leave there is, then we can say, okay, it's a long-term. But sometimes somebody could take off and say, I'm going on a medical leave and ha, or, excuse me, certain time of sick day, and have complications or something, and then it turns into something longer. So I think long-term would be anything 10 days or beyond that we know about, 10 days or beyond.
10 days or more.
So, if, if you're asking for family leave, we're, we're talking about either a male teacher that's going to have a child, or a female teacher's going to have a child. There should be some forewarning there, should be months, you know, of identification. So it, in, in those cases, you know, it shouldn't be a matter of surprise.
No, and those are, they're in your packet, so you're asked to approve all those leaves.
Except to the extent that maybe, you know, the wife has complications all of a sudden, and then they, they all of a sudden realize that he's going to, the husband will have to stay home and help, and help.
Sure, there's always exceptions to that.
Right, yeah.
Is there a, I don't know the answer to this, I probably should, but is there a state requirement on the length of time they need to give us notification prior to their, their leaving? No, so basically it's up to them to be considering on time?
There may be a requirement in the CBA, but the thing is, it's the, the emergency situations. I'm thinking of at least one and two, or one or two that happened last year, that you can't anticipate, which is the problem.
And which is what happened with the couple situations that we talked about earlier, where we had an interim, an interim substitute in, and they may have been interviewing, but we were also going through the long-term process of, okay, we know this person's going to be gone for six to eight weeks, so we're going to do the interview process, but in the meantime, like Brian says, we need to get somebody in there. So maybe that's why two or three people may have been in that situation, or subs may have been in that room.
Also, you know, it's, I'm sorry, I thought you were jumping in. The process has, you know, gone to become a lot more rigorous. And so there's been situations in which we've had long-term subs posting open, and we're interviewing, 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 trying to find somebody to-
Can't find anybody.
Right, trying to find somebody that meets those expectations, and so that's been, you know, a process as well.
Is it possible to create, I know you guys have like a sub-call list that you create, is it possible to create a, a sub-call list for long-term employees? To ask potential subs, to interview subs for long, to be, to be put on the long-term list? Can we, can you do that? So that you have somebody to call on, you have Jackie who is a one-day sub, but she said, you know, she's willing to be a long-term sub, can you put her on that list?
Yeah.
And I'm just making-
Sure.
Theoretical.
Sorry.
That's alright.
Pre-qualified.
Yeah, pre-qual, yeah.
What is happening is, we'll, we'll take, like we just did, we took candidates through the interview process, then we'll, we'll have some that we'll talk to and say, hey, you'd be a great long-term sub if something opens up. Because they've been through the process, so, you know, and, and they, they might not have been the top candidate at the time, but they, they did well. What ends, the problem is, is a lot of times, they'll agree, but then they'll either get another position, or they'll get another long-term sub position that might be longer or might happen sooner. So we'll lose them, but it's definitely, I think we could solidify that, so it's, it's more of an option. You know, we just don't know there's going to be-
Let me ask, let me ask a pertinent question about the difference of pay between a one-day sub or a two-day sub and a long-term sub.
Five dollars a day.
Five dollars a day.
After- 10 days, I think.
So, so after 10 days, you make five dollars? So if you, if you're a long-term sub for two months, three months, you're making five dollars more per day? Is that what you're saying?
And that doesn't go retroactive, does it? Or does it just start on the 11th day?
Ah, no, if you go beyond 120 days, you get the salary of the right-
The point is, is that we're talking about $105 for a long-term sub. How, how can you attract the type of teacher that you want in front of your students if you're only offering $105 a day? Can we not change that a long-term sub? And, and in that case, we wouldn't lose them, because if, if there are school districts that pay $110 a day, they're going to jump ship.
I totally, I totally agree with you, but I, I think that's, that this is a discussion for, for like finance or another, beyond, beyond this. I absolutely-
I, you know, I think we're going into school year and we're talking about substitutes right now. And I think it's very pertinent, and-
Right.
Well, there's a follow-up, there's a follow-up substitute discussion that's going to be on an, an agenda very shortly.
Can we, can we have an update on when that's going to be, the substitute forum?
Well, I think we were asked at the last finance committee meeting to talk about what are some average costs in the area. So we're putting that together for you for the September 16th meeting, and I think there was one more about the reasons for subs.
Right.
So we're putting that together for you too.
My, my point is, $105 a day for a long-term sub is less than minimum wage, okay? It, it is.
Well, I think that's a great discussion. I mean, I just think it has to be done at the right place, because right now, we're trying to figure out if we should take the long-term subs through an interview process, which I-
Lisa, you, you brought up the, the issue with long-term subs.
No, I, I-
Not with regard, not with long-term, not with cost.
I'm just talking about interview process, it just is a matter of time, I'm not trying, I don't want to talk about it, but we-
Yeah, I want to keep, I want to keep to the agenda.
We want to get through this policy.
We need to keep to the agenda, otherwise we're never going to get through this.
But can we add to that in the discussion, if we can ask the administration to come up with some sort of long-term hiring policy, hiring procedure that can help us with that situation, so we're not going in, we can do it, yeah, to better-
But, yes, I agree with that, but don't we agree that we somehow need to make sure that substitute language in the applicability is not, long-term subs should not be part of this statement?
Right.
If I'm interpreting what everyone has said correctly.
Right, so we need to figure out how to add that-
We need to figure out language to put in, to say that long-term subs need to fulfill the hiring process. They're not exempt, because this isn't the three things that you're talking about up here. Those, those do not apply to the rest of the policy.
Right.
So, and I think in that regard, a particular day or period of time, period of time of less than 10 days.
10 days, right, that was ridiculous.
So for 10 days or, excuse me, 11 days or more? That's what we're considering?
Oh, yeah, we're going the other way. This is the exemption of, who are ab, substitutes who are filling in a period of times of 11, 11 days or more.
Right, 11 school days or more.
11, 11 school days or more. Okay, substitutes who are filling in, this exception will be substitutes who are filling in for regular employees who are absent for a particular day or period of time of 11 school days or more.
Right.
They have their, that's the exception.
My suggestion there is that we then hire a certified teacher at a certified teacher rate. That's where I'm going with this. If, if we have long-term subs that are in front of our students for months, we, the kids deserve a lot more than what a substitute can provide.
Right.
And I would, I would like some support on that.
And it might be, there might be other things we can do as well to sweeten the deal, to attract better quality substitutes.
Yeah, I don't think this, this policy is addressing pay for any employee, alright?
Right.
Well, how about, how about who you hire though? It's a hiring policy, is it not?
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's called a hiring policy, so I'm, I'm suggesting that you, for a long-term sub, you hire better qualified candidate.
And Rachel has asked us to put together, you know, a draft of long-term sub procedures for 11 school days or more, so we'll bring that to-
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay, I, I want to make sure I got this. I believe that it was what we initially proposed is the right way to, to state that. That this policy applies to all staff, open positions, except for the, except for the one-day or short, short, short substitute positions. So, who are absent for a particular day or period of less than 10 days. Am I not reading that? Exception to this policy, is, we're talking about just short, these, these short-term substitutes.
That's who we want to encompass and-
No, that we're, that we're exempting from this policy. They don't have to go through this whole hiring process.
So anybody 10 days or less?
So it should be 10 days or less.
10 days or less, or one day at a-
Period of, period of time of-
School attendance days or less.
10 school days or less.
And you're adding that to number one?
Yes.
Okay.
Or maybe we just replace period of time with a specific period, you know, range of time?
Yeah, 10 days or, or less.
Or absent for-
Or a particular day, well, I think it still needs to be a period of time, and is period of time always assumed to be consecutive days? Because we, we're talking about consecutive days.
Yeah.
Is period of time always consecutive?
Yes, when you're considering short-term and long-term, yes.
Period of time, okay.
So it has to be consecutive school days.
Right, so I, that would probably be in the, in the CBA agreement too, right? There's probably a term period of time.
I'll have to look that up.
So, so, again, we're going to just change one to say substitutes, there's the exception to this policy, our substitutes are filling in for regular employees who are absent for a particular day or a period of time of 10 school days or less, I think that sounds right. Okay? Okay, and then out of this, we have, we're going to task the administration to draft a procedure for hiring long-term substitutes. Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah, for 11 days, 11 school days or more.
Yeah, so, so, long-term meaning 11 day, 11 school days or more.
Wait, what are they doing, they're doing a process?
A procedure.
Procedure, okay.
So at present, there is no procedure for a long-term sub?
No special procedure, right?
We don't have anything written down, but we've been following, you know, suit of postings.
But wait, just to clarify there, those candidates, those positions are subject to this policy.
So why isn't that the procedure?
Right?
The long-term?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
They are subject to this policy.
They're, they're subject to this policy.
And there's additionally going to be some other process?
There's going to be some other procedure that-
If they don't follow the regular procedure?
It's probably going to be a variation, because, and having to do that, we're talking about having some kind of on-call list special for long-term substitutes, because what happens is there's been big voids in getting long-term-
Oh, so it's more that, is the, is the-
Right, right, as opposed to the-
Procedure, not the-
So that you can just have a body.
You would still run through this.
As long as that procedure adheres to the body of this policy.
Right, it's just going to be a slight variation in the way it's-
And if that practically, in, in, in practice, if that's not possible, then we'll have to adjust and maybe fall back to just the, just like a, a regular hire would be, you know? But we have to kind of work through that.
Sorry, just a clarified question, because we'll work on this. Typically, what we have been doing is we've, you know, been following our, you know, protocol for hiring a staff members which is long-term, which means a posting. We've been posting that position, which means that that position needs to be posted for 10 days. So, with something like this, like if we could write in there that maybe that would be something that we'd be able to change that is specific to long-term subs, that if we can find somebody within that 10-day process, we don't have necessarily way to 10 days to hire. You know what I'm saying? Because that's, that automatically has meant- Because that's, that automatically has meant that for 10 days, someone else is going to the classroom. It could have been, I guess, before, it could have been the same person.
Right, so if you found somebody at five days, you couldn't move till 10 days because that was the, that was the policy.
Well, wait, well, whose requirement is that? Is that a CBA requirement? Is it statutory requirement? Or the 10 days that you had to post it for 10 days?
It's not statutory.
So where does that come from?
I don't think it's in our.
It's not in our policy.
No, it's not in the policy.
It's just been our practice.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what we, with every position, we're posting 10 days. And that's what's my policy is, is what, so it comes from somewhere, I don't know where it comes from.
It's just standard practice. But you can provide for exceptions for accelerated procedures in certain situations.
Can I just ask, Bill? Do you have your contract in front of you? Because that is who brought it to our attention at the very beginning of the year was Patty to post it for 10 days.
For certified employee assignments, there is a section on posting of vacancies for 10 or 11 days. Substitutes aren't part of the.
Right, okay. So we can override that, or that doesn't even need to, we could just put that in our procedure.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we could just put that in our procedure.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so that only applies if the person leaves the district, not if they're taking a medical leave.
Permanent replacements. So a certified vacancy is not substitute.
A certified vacancy, right? So if the physician becomes vacant.
Not even, a union position.
Yeah, so we're not talking about the physician becoming vacant, the person is on medical leave or paternity leave or what, meaning they're coming back. We expect them to come back.
Right, we're not posting for that position, we're just, it's really just a filler for that position.
Yes, right. Temporary.
Yeah.
Just happens to be more than 10 days temporary. Okay?
But I would agree, I think that that's a good thing. Because, I mean, if you found a sub on day two, why are we waiting 10 days? Let's get the person that's going to be in there long-term in there and let them go.
Right.
I mean, if we think they're highly qualified and great for kids, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to try to make that happen.
And I think we could just clarify that in the procedures.
Yes.
What's that? Nope. I said, no, none of our teachers aren't going to leave to go be a long-term sub in our district. To make $105 a day? Yeah, it's kind of a catch-22 there. Can't you see the $105 thing is working against quality teachers for a long term?
Or just as a side note, just, I know this is off the docket here, but basically somehow maybe give them priority if we have a good long-term sub or even a temporary sub, may give them priority in open certified positions, but that would be something we'd have to talk about.
I didn't follow your rationale.
But basically giving them kind of an internal type of, but yeah, they'd have to, that opens up a whole ball box. So basically giving them priority in consideration. You could do that without having to actually write that because they know, they would have the advantage of being known by the people you're working for in the interview process.
And that's been in the evaluations, I've seen.
Yeah, yeah, they know because they've worked with them. Right, right, that's true.
Right, okay. Final comments along this section? Go to the order, okay? Moving to the general hiring criteria and process, this is kind of, is putting some qualities, characteristics of what is meant by a highly qualified candidate, just Lisa.
Can we go back one second?
Okay.
There's a pretty good question that I think the transfer actually is interesting. Into and out of administrative positions. So, within the same job category just makes that mean they have to go through the interview process because they're going from a teaching position to an administrative position.
No, it's an exception.
It's an exception.
So they don't have to go through it, they can just do it as long as it comports with the CBA? If there is one in place.
Right, and so do we think that that's a good process? I mean, don't we think that a teacher who might want to be an administrator should go through the interview process?
Well, that's a changing of a, that's changing.
Oh, that's changing the CBA.
But that's, that's changing the description. It would be like, it would be apples to apples, so it'd be custodian one to custodian one position. You're just transferring the work location or a.
Right, but I'm saying, maybe I'm reading this wrong. Oh, I am. Never mind. I got, I'm, yeah. I read it backwards and I was like, wait, we got to be able to, you can't just take a teacher and make an administrator with awkwardly. The process is like, that doesn't make sense to me. Sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's right, that's right. Okay. Okay, so as you, everyone going through these new items of how we qualify, these are, again, what we expect a highly qualified candidate would try to demonstrate in the, in the interview process. And then I would expect that this would lead into kind of what we measure as a, as a district on what is a, what is a highly qualified teacher, staff, you know, employee of this district.
So David, this past year, you've been very good about bringing this to our attention, this issue of quality of hiring and so forth. Is this kind of putting into policy what you have been proposing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because before it just said highly qualified. Well, what is, what does that mean?
Well, I'm all for it, you know. I would just hope that we could get it implemented.
Right.
Move on.
Yes. Okay, and so with the, beyond the characteristics, we talk about, we actually inserting language that we are, that our intent is that where it's going to be done through a fair and competitive process. Our efforts are to maximize the pool of candidates. Our superintendent is responsible for making hiring recommendations to the board in accordance with the procedures set forth in Exhibit 530-E. And so I want you to take close attention to the next sentences here. All hiring decisions are subject to the approval by the board. The board's vote to approve a particular hire will serve as validation of the district's administration's compliance with the hiring process set forth in the policy. To the extent that the hiring process deviated from this policy or the procedures in the board Exhibit 530-E, such approval shall constitute a waiver of the district's strict compliance with the hiring process under the policy.
I actually would like to comment on that. That was one of, in going through this policy, that was the first thing that I put, I redlined out because, you know, we can't really, as we are not part of the process, we're just approving after the fact, I don't think we should put that in there. We can't validate something when we were not in the room participating in. I would ask to strike that language from where it says, "The board's vote to approve" on the first page to where it says, "However, board shall not permit deviation from the anti-nepotism policy provision," because I don't, if it's in there, I don't see why we'd have to say that. It's part of the policy. So, and to keep.
What do you mean, it's not a part of the policy?
Meaning it says, it's saying, because it's kind of, it's playing off the previous sentence where it's saying, "However, the board shall not permit deviation from the anti-nepotism provision of the policy." They're saying that's basically the only time we can ring in and say, hey, you're not following the policy. So I think, I think we should strike that.
Well, that's, I think that's just saying, that's where you would have the most conflict for a board, to approve my brother to become the next.
We can keep that in there.
So even if we say, yes, we're going to do that, that's still, that still is considered a violation of the policy, of the anti-nepotism policy.
Right, right, right. You can keep that sentence in there, it was just the other, the previous sentence that I, that I said, we should not put that in there.
Yeah. So this provision, so what is trying to be.
Just that one sentence where it says, on page one, where it starts, "The board's vote to approve a particular hire will serve as validation," where it runs on until the second page, just that sentence.
Right, so, so recall, see, I would like to refer everyone to the comment, Bill. So this provision is intended to address the fact that the board cannot, after an employee is hired, decide that there was a procedural misstep in the hiring process that would necessitate the new employee's termination. So instead, we have drafted this language to require the board, before approving, either review or confirm that the hiring process was followed.
Well, why wouldn't we want to do that? If we're going to, if we found that our policy was not applied with, wouldn't we want to enforce our policy and?
How better way to enforce the policy than to make consequences?
Yeah, I don't think that's fair to say, to having our own policy that we're going to waive arguments. It's not, doesn't help us.
Usually people validate.
Any other discussion?
Usually people validate policies through, you know, procedures, through audit. Once a year, you audit your policies.
But retroactively, so you're retroactively.
Yeah, I mean, but what this is basically forcing the board to do is audit after each and every.
Well, before, or as the process is going through.
And, you know, and again, I just, you know.
You can't validate it unless you're auditing every hiring decision. I don't think they should have, yeah.
No, I think, I think you have to find another way to validate this stuff rather than have the board ask a gazillion questions every time.
And that doesn't mean necessarily the person is going to be summarily fired, per se.
Yeah.
But can we clarify that? Why, why is the comment from the attorney saying that it's a fact that we cannot, after an employee is hired, decide there was a procedural misstep that would necessitate the new employee's termination? What is the basis of that statement? That's what I'm wondering. Boy, how can you even leave that?
Well, the only thing that I would, well, maybe if we could see some examples of the type of violation or of this procedure that would result in termination, but the ones that would normally be is if they themselves don't, don't adhere to their own representations is really the, if they represent themselves having certain qualifications.
Yeah, so, because otherwise.
I guess I have a disconnect in the fact that the hiring process wasn't followed or terminating the employee, but they weren't running the process, or am I in?
Right, well, that's, I think essentially that's what they're trying to get at, is that now you could potentially be subjecting yourself to litigation.
But have we said here that the remedy is going to be termination of a?
Well, there was, there was in the original policy. I did put in an nullification clause, which I saw that was taken out, saying, "It's discovered pre-employment, any part of this process was not followed." So basically, before the person's hired, the candidate did not meet minimum qualifications, candidate misled the panel or was untruthful in their application, superintendent shall revoke the offer. That's in pre-employment. But if they don't at any time, I think that if anybody doesn't have the proper credentialing, minimum qualifications are untruthful, that's a terminable offense. But it's specific to that, it's not going to be, wait, there were four people in the panel when you said there were three people in the panel. I think that, you know, we're not going to start combing through processes and to say, to say, and I'm hoping, trust that they will be followed appropriately, but I'm saying these are generally the things that will trigger a revocation of an offer.
But isn't that the concern, is that if we say a, a board member will be on the interview process and there wasn't one, and we put an offer out there, and then all of a sudden later, 12 months later, we come back and say, oh, we're actually rescinding your employment here because we didn't follow our procedures?
I think Rachel's trying to get beyond the procedural side and more the substantive.
Right, but this is about the procedures. This is about being caught up in, this, the risk of being caught up in the procedure.
Well, that's just if they don't have, if they misrepresented, if they're untruthful at any time in the hiring process, which is criminal as well. But, and if they don't meet minimum qualifications, they don't have a credentialing they represented they had, legally, they don't have cause of action. You're out. You misrepresented something. That's a big deal. So it's, I know it says if it's discovered that any part of the process was not followed. I think that could happen anytime, with the exception of, you know, CBA rules may play in differently. But again, you have the language in there that says that the CBA conflicts with that, the CBA controls. But the law is, is that we're protected if you get rid of anybody and they had lied in their application, lied in an interview, submitted a false document, said they had credentials they don't have.
So that's their action, or misaction, or.
Misrepresentation.
Misrepresentation to us, this is the other way around.
Right, or if the process was so blatantly, you know, I'm not going to say like, you know, I don't think we should nitpick the process to death, but if the process was blatantly.
It's not us, it's the, it's the.
When you say us is the board? Yes, that's the employee, but I'm saying that if the process was, you know, blatantly disregarded and we discover it, board later on, I think that we could, I think this, that would give us the power to say, you know what, we are disapproving this hire because it was blatantly disregarded.
Okay.
What a blatant disregard is.
The risk, yeah, so what is blatantly disregarded, but is the risk of a board, not saying this board, but a board rescinding the employment of, because of a procedural misstep. And then just, just letting that, letting that person go and just say because the process wasn't followed.
Right, right.
When it was our process and we should have been watching our process.
Right, I think that, you're right. I think that we can change and modify some language to say the process is not followed, we don't have to take it on the employee. The employee is the innocent actor, that's us, and that's our problem. You're right about that. And maybe we should distinguish that, but maybe we don't need to mention it because if our policy is not followed.
Yeah, and the only reason this language is in there is because we're inserting so much procedure into the policy. More than, more than usual.
So which, the language was still in the sentence?
Yeah.
That we're talking about?
The sentence that you had.
Right, I still think we should strike it because we're not in the room. I don't think we should be in, put in the, I agree with Mary Rose, we should not be put in the position where having to audit every single hiring process to make sure everything was followed.
But if we find out after the fact that there was some wrongdoing or some misinformation, we should be able to then make that action.
It's the action is that, well, it's two different actions, I think.
Two different, I feel like there's two different things we're talking about. One, we're talking about the employee who's in the interview process, misrepresenting him or herself, we find out later, there should be some ramifications.
Right.
The other is.
Yes.
Us running a process and not running it the way that our.
Doesn't follow the policy.
Yeah, their policy and procedures.
But say for an example, we require a criminal background check, and for some reason it doesn't happen, okay? And then we find out that there's problems. Yes, we should be able to terminate that employee.
But he also, that employee also represented.
Yeah, and that's bad news for us, too. We didn't do the criminal background check.
But that employee also.
That's our procedure, I mean.
But that employee almost.
Moral of law.
You know what, I think that.
That's bad news if we didn't do that.
That employee almost undoubtedly misrepresented himself if he got hired.
At some point, yeah.
There is in the, in, I'm sorry, in 530, it says, "District retains right to discharge any employee's criminal background investigation reveals conviction for committing or attempting to commit any of the offenses outlined in Section 521B, or who falsifies or admits facts from his or her employment application or other employment documents."
What's that?
There we go, we already got that.
It's in here.
Right, but I still.
In the general application process, there's a whole thing about criminal, right? And so.
I don't know, I don't know what the application process is.
Right.
You have to say, we haven't had.
There's got to be something, you have been convicted.
Right, correct, right.
There's specific questions about crimes under this general question.
Right.
Okay. But I still support that we should strike that sentence.
Okay, so let's.
Should I do a motion?
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion about that?
What's the motion?
So the motion is that we would strike the sentence, "The board's vote to approve a particular hire will serve as validation of the district administration's compliance with the hiring process set forth in this policy, or to the extent the hiring process deviated from this policy or the procedures in board Exhibit 530-E. Such approval shall constitute a waiver of the district's strict compliance with the hiring. hiring process under this policy."
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe you want to strike the first word, however, maybe just put, "The board shall not permit."
Just the however.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, and then put in, strike the, strike the word however. And then, "The board shall permit deviation from that."
I don't think we should prevent any deviation from this policy, but, so that's why I think it's silly.
The board shall not permit any deviation.
We shouldn't prevent, yeah, I'm saying, for any of it, though.
Yeah.
How about we say, "The board shall not," I'm sorry to, we, I know we have a motion on the table, but another thing we could do is take out the however, and say, "The board shall not permit deviation from the policy." I don't even know if we have to say that, I mean, does not go without saying.
No, I, I always believe that the policy has, you know, the board has that policy, but it's a dangerous, it's a slippery slope when you start deviating from the policy.
That's why you shouldn't do it, yeah, we shouldn't have to say that, we should put it in.
But we're overriding a classified policy, we're overriding policy, you know, sometimes it's necessary, but it is, it is a slippery slope.
All right, why, we could strike that whole sentence, right?
Yes.
What about the next sentence?
I'd say we could strike it, too.
Well, the problem is that this is the sentence that's saying, if somebody doesn't get hired, they-
They can claim.
They can claim a procedural misstep and then, you know, sue us for that, so.
But I don't know, does this really give us protection against that? Well, you can't, you can sue us because, or you can't raise a complaint against that because it says so in my policy, that you can't do it, you know? I don't know if this really gives us some protection.
It does say, "Failure of the board or administration to comply with the provision shall not constitute a basis for third-party challenge to selection or non-selection of a candidate."
Yeah.
It does say that, so we have that protection anyway. What would you like to do, Art?
I'm reading the comment, number seven. Okay, it says right in the comment that that language might not have a lot of, to provide a lot of protection, but whatever, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
So you have an amendment to the motion, to the motion?
To add the sentence after it?
The however, the board shall not permit deviation.
Yes, right.
So implicitly saying, we don't, we shouldn't be deviating from policy at all.
Right, right, exactly.
So what's all coming out?
It is, the last sentence beginning at the end of page one, going on to page two, and then, and then the next sentence, starting with however.
All right, so, so basically everything that's highlighted is coming out?
No.
Or selected?
No.
No, just two sentences.
Oh, well, it is highlighted, on your copy it probably is.
There's two different copies.
But not everything, not everything.
But not everything that's highlighted, there's a difference.
Here, no.
And then this sentence right here.
Okay.
Failure, what's your failure?
Sorry.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Never mind, I'm wrong again.
Okay, you're all in favor of that?
So keeping failure.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, pick a, take a vote.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
Move the ball.
I'm sorry, Arthur Perry. This is the first reading.
Thinking, thinking.
Tick tock, tick tock.
I'm just going to say no, because I got too many questions about the whole ball wax, but no.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Rachel Morello?
Aye.
David Kadama?
No.
Lisa Gainer?
No.
Randy Brockway?
No.
So does the motion not, does not pass?
Okay, what I would like to do, I want to go back, I really would like to go back to the board attorney, get a little more background on this.
I agree.
And all, and just kind of talk this through. I, I agree, there's some good points there, but before we just strike it permanently, let me, let me go back, is that okay with everyone? Go back, get a little more context and background, and I'll bring it back to, at the next policy committee.
And just so everybody knows, initially Hodges reviewed all of this and made all the statements, and then I just had Franck review it two weeks ago. So they were in agreement with the changes that we made, but we can ask them some more specific questions.
So, yeah, let me, you know, I haven't, you know, I haven't talked to their policy over, policy wonk, yes, policy wonk over.
Are you, what attorney are you working with?
So this initially started with Hodges-Louisie.
This is like months ago, right?
Yeah, this is like months, months, months ago.
And how about recently, have you had any?
I haven't, so I haven't met, I haven't really had a discussion with this, and I do, I would like to have that discussion with a policy expert.
But they have, Randy, they've reviewed this, so, but we can ask them specific questions.
Yes.
All right, so just to recap my position, I agree that I don't think the board can be expected to audit every hiring process. I just want to make sure that, I, I don't really understand all the details of why the attorney has this position on this, so I'd just like to know a little more. I think the ideal would be to come up with a way that the board doesn't have to audit, like, in detail participate in and audit in every hiring decision or hiring process, but we can still know, understand the risks and impacts.
What's the purpose of this?
Yeah.
What's, what's it looking to accomplish, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, because you raised a good point, but, you know, in the comment it says, it's the fact that the board cannot, after the employee's hired, so, right, give me some basis for that.
What is that fact?
How do we know?
I just want to understand that.
Right, fair enough.
Okay, so moving on, the only other item was new language that says, "Neither the superintendent nor any district employee may change the status of an employee without prior authorization from the board unless required by law."
I would change that word employee to position.
To what?
To position, in other words-
The status of a, of a position?
Of a job position, in other words, if something's, you know, vacant, like, like the pair of pros that we talked about last year. Unless we approve those to be full-time positions.
Read it out loud.
Neither the superintendent nor any district employee may change the status of an employee without prior authorization from the board unless required by law, versus-
How about-
Status of a, a position.
I hear what you're saying, I agree, there, that's a question, is this really referring to the employee or to the position? That's a big difference.
And there maybe is a better word than position, but, but, you know, we authorize that positions be filled with a certain status.
Can I make a suggestion? How about if we say an employee or a position? Would that cover all bases of an employee or position?
Maybe and/or position?
Sorry, say that again?
Okay, sure.
Because there's, it could affect just one person or all people within that position.
An employee or position, meaning that the position, presumably if you're, you're going to change the status of somebody, it's the person, if you're going to change the status of a position, it's the same effect, meaning that somebody's-
Well, part-time to full-time.
You have a person versus, you have body versus no body.
Right.
Right, or you've authorized a temporary position, and you're going to discontinue that and open up a, a new full-time position.
Same thing in practice right now, it's coming to the board, I mean, if someone is going to move from a part-time position to a full-time position, then we see that, and that's approved by the board, yeah, no.
And the other, the other scenario is that somebody leaves, the position is open, we're going to hire somebody new, we should also, the board should also know if it's changing from-
From hard-time to full-time.
Yeah, is that what I'm, what I'm hearing?
Yes, so that's another, we'll put that on, on the list. Okay, good place to stop?
You know what, can I make a suggestion on the first reading, under Policy 2.110, that maybe we add an amendment to include a provision or a process that we can go about administering a vote of no confidence for president or vice president. I present this for future boards to try and do, give them a better tool going forward, that if they are unhappy with their elected leaders, that there's a way to remove said president or vice president from office on, I'd say a four to three vote, a vote of no confidence. This is not an indictment on the current administration, just I think there's times we've all have thought about it, I've been on the board almost four years, and I just think that trying to empower the next board and give them a better tool going forward would be helpful.
Okay, let me say, for, because in consideration of time, how about I suggest that I work with you with some, some language that you would like to insert in here, and that we can bring up at the, at the next policy committee meeting?
Perfect.
Okay, so that's on 2.110.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Then with that, so we're going to continue, so the plan is that we'll, we'll pick up the rest of the agenda at the next policy committee meeting, including continuing our work through Policy 530, hiring process and criteria, and I appreciate everyone's comments, and we consider the meeting adjourned at 7:29.
Thank you.